The night went so fast, I'm like, it couldn't possibly happen again tonight, could it? Do we have, do we have executive? Do we have executive?
We do. Just promised mail if you bring it.
I know.
It's just... How are ya?
Okay, let's get started with our January 7th, 2019 city council meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call Christina.
Bastian.
President.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Parsons.
President.
Wakefield.
Here.
Mayor Lundberg.
Here.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to switch under visitors and time items, switch B and A around so we can read the proclamation prior to public comment. And then also, as requested of councilperson Clark, to go into a short executive session for litigation matters. Those are the only two changes I have.
Still moved, Mayor.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as revised. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. We have minutes from December 13th, 17th, and 20th.
Move to approve.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Item number five is the approval of the claims from 2018, and I think we can take both of those at the same time. Approval of the claims from fiscal year 2018 or calendar year 2018 and the approval of the 2019 claims. Just...
Second.
Motion is second to approve all the bills and claims. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the good thing of being the mayor of the city of Brandon, a lot of good things, but one of the better things is you get to read positive proclamations, and this is my first one and the first one of 2019. And it's a proclamation to recognize Nick Skipstead and his role as an intermediate school principal and his safety of the kids. I want to be very cognizant of the fact that councilmember Wakefield is the one that brought this forward with, I assume you have children down at intermediate school and has seen Nick in action, and so he's the one that's brought that forward to us to read this proclamation tonight. And so with that, as mayor, I get to read it, so I get the fun part of it. With that, Nick, if you could come on forward, we'll read this proclamation honoring you tonight as a big proponent of safety in our schools. A lot of whereas and here to fours and all that, so bear with me here. Whereas Mr. Nick Skipstead is the principal of Brandon Valley Intermediate School, and whereas Mr. Skipstead has taken an active role to ensure the safety of our children and parents that cross West Park Street to go to Brandon Intermediate School and Robert Bennett Elementary School by monitoring the intersections at Park Street and Locust Avenue and escorting pedestrians across West Park Street on virtually every school morning in all weather conditions. And whereas the residents of Brandon, South Dakota have noticed Mr. Skipstead's commitment to provide safe access to the schools and have expressed their gratitude for his efforts, his positive attitude, his excellent example of going above and beyond the call of duty that he is providing to the children of the community while providing this service, and whereas the city of Brandon wishes to recognize Mr. Skipstead for his commitment to the children of Brandon, South Dakota. Therefore, I, Paul Lundberg, Mayor of the city of Brandon, hereby call upon my fellow citizens to recognize the commitment by Mr. Skipstead to provide for the safety of the public and the positive role model that he is providing for the children of this community. May we, as a community, utilize his example of actively taking a role to improve our community to provide a safe and positive community in which to raise our children. Congratulations, Mr. Skipstead.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. I have the privilege of being a work colleague of his in our day job, so I'm very happy that Nick received this honor. I assume the little chortles from the audience was behind me when he was in his costume. I'm sure your college football players would love to get ahold of, teammates would love to get ahold of that. Thanks again, Nick. We appreciate everything you do. Okay, on to more boring things of city council. Oh, this one isn't so boring. People who'd like to make public input, now's your time. Address the board.
I'm Todd Winkle, Heartland Funeral Home, 1801 West Frontier. The reason I'm here today is I would like to bring something forward and an idea of safety as well. I've visited with Mr. Bastian and Ms. Clark and Ms. Fish also about this, and I've talked with Raleigh at length a couple of times. One of the situations that I come across is earlier snowstorm we have in the Brandon area here, we had quite icy streets. And I live at Frontier and Heritage, which also is a commercial area, very little traffic known to be out there on the weekends. But I also had a funeral service out there, and due to the snow sanding policy or whatever it was here, I believe Raleigh had explained that they had basically just put out sand on the intersections and on the hills that are next to stoplights. And at that point, while I was out there, we had a visitation where there was a couple of fender benders, nothing major, but people are sliding all over. I called and requested that somebody come out and sand it and was told, well, that's not our policy. So I spoke with Raleigh later. I called a couple of people, and at that point Raleigh had told me that when they do their sanding and plowing, they kind of hit it where they have to. But I feel that even though it's a weekend, we have a dance studio out there that operates every day of the week. We have daycare out there on Monday through Friday that starts at 5:30 in the morning, 500 and some kids out there. If we don't sand in front of some of these driveways when we have extreme conditions, we're going to have a bigger issue, especially since we don't have sidewalks out there. Now, I believe the planning and zoning approval of waiving the sidewalk gives a bit of a concern because kids now at the dance studio have to park on the street and walk across that street with traffic, also with the daycare in that area. I also have had a concern with the snow removal, and that I have talked with these other individuals about as well. When our plows come out early in the morning, because I also have a plowing company, I'm out also at that same time, and I see what is actually being done. And we come out with four trucks on Holly Boulevard, all of the main routes, obviously according to the newspaper, Raleigh quoted this last week, that are done first and primary. And then after that, everybody's divided up into their little zones that they go into the commercial or residential areas. However, I don't know if Raleigh's aware of it, but there is a plow truck that follows them, a one-ton pickup truck, that does go up and take care of all the bluff cul-de-sacs at the same time before they've even gone back into the city. And I'm thinking, why can't that, if they can spend 15 minutes doing the cul-de-sacs and the bluffs, come down and do Holly and Heritage Boulevard at 5 o'clock in the morning or 4 o'clock in the morning, at least, not even curb to curb, but at least to open up that designated area because you've had kids going to daycare. You figure 500 kids over there, one and a half per car, how many cars is that? And how long before we have an accident, before we say, we should have done this first? Just my thought. My question is, if it's not something we've always done, can we change it to something that we can do? It's a growing city, times change, things, policies need to change a little bit with making sure that just a small commercial neighborhood gets a little attention, sure. You can look at some of the other daycares, they're off of Redwood or Sioux Boulevards. It would be only practical sense to make sure that that gets at least opened a little bit in the morning. Come back later and finish it if you need to, but thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Thank you. It sounds like a valid concern, and I understand the daycare situation out there, that's almost like another school out there. So what I will do, Mr. Winkle, is I'll talk to administration and see what we got going on and get all the ins and outs and have them contact you one way or the other, good or bad, and what we could possibly do to get that rectified out there. I know it's a tough thing, but I got to talk to those guys and get, there's always another side that something's going to be delayed or something, so just give me the time to talk to them, and then we'll get back to you. Is that fair? Very good. Anybody else that wish to address the council? Thank you for your concerns. Okay.
So, my name is Elisa Edmonds. I've not been in town very long. I'm sorry?
Ha ha, there it is.
Hey. So, my name is Elisa Edmonds. I've moved into town January 1st of last year, so I've only been here a year. So, all of this is new to me, meeting you guys. So I've heard that there's a whole lot of stuff going on with social media, and you guys are trying to limit what's being put on. And I'm a big supporter of the First Amendment and being able to say what you want. I don't always like what people say, but I think you should be able to say it, so... You know, I'm reading through stuff that people put on, and there are several people that are on the council that have pages on Facebook, and I think they should be able to have those because how else are we going to be able to tell you guys what it is that we think? The page that you guys have as a city does nothing. You guys don't do anything with it. Nobody does anything, posts anything, and if you guys aren't going to do anything with that, there's no reason to have it. Let us have an outlet. You know, I'm reading on certain pages that people are talking about, it's an attempt to limit free speech with what is being proposed, that it's, with the town's government history the way it is, it looks like it's an attempt to keep the good old boy system in place. So it's, and does the town attorney really have discrepancies with constitutional rights? There's other things in here, like if the president can treat it well with no consequences, then why do we have to have such a strict policy, expect people to act with common sense? So then you've got others saying, you know, if you read on this current thread, the city hates social media, they can't control the outcome of it, and they can only control those that they employ. You know, it's stuff like this, when your people are thinking that you hate them so much, be very careful with what you decide to do with the voices that they have, because if you control it too much, they're going to hate you a lot, and those that are elected aren't going to be here very long. I've only been here a year, and I'm finding this out. And it's not just from social media. People talk, and I don't talk a whole lot. I keep my mouth shut. And I'm hearing this. So if you guys are going to pass something like this that's so strict, be very careful. Be very careful with what you do, with everybody's First Amendment rights. It's very important, and that's why it's in the Constitution, and y'all are going to end up getting sued somewhere. And I don't want that because I pay taxes. I'm going to end up having to defend somebody in this, and I don't want to do that. So I appreciate you hearing me, and I really hope that you think twice about passing that legislation that you guys are thinking about. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Do I need to push that again or not?
Yes, please.
Anyone else you wish to address the board? With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, number eight. The second reading of ordinance 573, plotting, fee payment, and filing with the county required. Need a motion on that, Brian?
Can we do all of them at once, Brian? Seven?
No, do them separate.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second to approve ordinance number 573. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 574 is the clearing of ice in addition to snow from the sidewalks, basically just adding ice to the ordinance that requires removal of snow from the sidewalks.
I'll make a motion for 574.
Motion is second to approve that ordinance, number 574. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, I would just comment that next meeting we'll have the resolution to enact the charges for that. So we don't have a resolution for the charges, but that'll come next month.
Okay.
The intent is there would be the cost of the sand and some small staff fee and that kind of thing, because one of the concerns that was brought up in the briefing meeting is if somebody's on vacation, we don't want it to be an absorbent amount of money to put salt down, so...
Right. I asked Christina to look at what we do for the lawn care weeds. I think we charge an hourly rate and kind of that would be the basis for the amount. So that'll be before you for consideration. I would assume they'll bring that information to you.
Good. Ordinance 576 is the rain sensor ordinance change?
I'll make a motion.
Motion is second to approve ordinance 576. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Can we have some discussion on that first?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Perfect. So, I kind of want to talk about what this ordinance is and why we're doing it. So, as we found through the very diligent efforts by the Conservation Committee, there's some potential gains for our community by having a rain sensor. What it does is it helps protect overwatering. This past summer, even though we were in watering restrictions, there were several times where residents reached out to me that even multiplexes had their sprinkler systems going during the rain. What you look at is with this, having a rain sensor, it's going to reduce the overall burden on the city. And having that reduce burden, in essence, can potentially delay very expensive upgrades to our systems to handle the extra load that it puts on. One of the things that's extremely exciting about this process is coming up, we'll actually be talking about some rebates that the city will be offering to help with the cost implications of this. And this is moving forward, so any new systems. Is that correct, Brian? So, if you have an existing sprinkler system, it's not going to impact you, this is for new. But if you were to replace your clock or your timer, then this ordinance would be something that would impact you. So, great opportunity.
I think Mr. Kevin Smith from our Water Committee delineated that information very well when he's here to present it, so all those in favor of ordinance 576?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, the Golf Course Committee Golf Pro contract for 2019?
Correct. It includes the changes in the incentive package that we discussed, but all the changes from the 2018 contract are highlighted in red.
And the total estimated, I think you had given us some ballpark. Did we get a chance to firm that up on what the total estimate was?
Not for 2018 yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the Golf Pro contract for 2019.
Second. Motion is second to approve the contract for the Golf Pro for 2019. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Along with that, we have a contract for the Events Center Coordinator for 2019?
Correct.
Any questions on that? Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion is second to approve the contract for the Events Center Coordinator for 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Police report is there for your review. Inspection Department report is there for your review also. We need to approve a letter of resignation from one of our patrol officers, Clayton McElroy. I could have a motion to approve that? Motion is second to approve the resignation from Clayton McElroy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With his absence, there is a potential for hiring from a previous list, and I imagine Chief Call is going to address that situation right now.
Yeah, we have a current list of applicants from our last hiring, and we would like to move ahead and tender a conditional job offer to an individual that's at the top of that list.
Any concerns from the council?
We have already reached out to him to see if he's still interested. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any legal need to open the position and publish it? We can just take it from a previous list, even though it's a new opening at a new time over a year later?
Well, we do have the requirements to follow the Veterans' Preference Statute, so I would say that you should be posting, because if you have a qualified veteran for an applicant, the public entity has to interview that, and if you're not going to do that, then I don't think you're complying with the Veterans' Preference Statute. Do you want to expand upon that? There's a statute in South Dakota that says you have to allow a veteran to interview if they're duly qualified, and if they're equally qualified for the position, you are to hire that person. And if you don't post for it, then I don't think you're allowing the veteran to go in and apply for the position. So, there's no requirement about how long you have to post for it, but I think to comply with that law, you should be posting for it.
As these are the same applicants from our previous position, I would imagine those requirements were taken care of during that timeframe.
Right, for that position, but this is a different position, though.
And it's not uncommon for, in my experience, for you to establish an eligibility list. And at the time that we did these interviews, I was informing these people that we were going to keep this eligibility list, assuming we had good applicants open for a two-year period of time.
So I guess what I'm hearing is it's okay to have that list, but we do need to post the position in case there's any additional applicants that would like to be added to that list.
So, because we don't have any policy that says we keep this open for a year, and so I know it's going to delay the process, but I think to comply with that law, I think that's my recommendation, is to post the position, and you can take care of it next month in terms of making the conditional offer.
I would just hope that we would get these things taken care of before we go to the board meeting with these items, is my concern here.
As would I.
With that being said, though, Chief, I'm going to have to pull it off the agenda and check to make sure that we have these requirements of the veteran stuff met, because I know that is a legal requirement that we have to have that, so... And in the future, I hope we get these things taken care of before we get to this Monday night meeting. With that, we're just going to have to delay that, or what's the word I'm looking for? Table.
Table.
Item number 11, the Park and Recreation Report. There's a work report for your review, and we need to, approval to donate the roof from the skate park to the fire department for training purposes?
Correct.
Devin, anything to add to that?
No, we declared a surplus a while back. Sorry? We declared a surplus a while back. I think this is the best thing for it.
Pretty cut and dry. Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion is second to donate the roof from the old skate park to the fire department for training purposes. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have quotes on skid loader attachments that we approved the purchase of a skid loader at a previous meeting, and now we have quotes for attachments to that skid loader?
Yep. The original plan was always to use the leftover skid loader budget to buy as many attachments as I could. As you can see by my letter there, I'd like to get four attachments, a snowblower, an angle broom, a stump grinder, and a grapple. Now, a couple of these could be taken out of our ash tree budget because they will use primarily for tree removals. Snowblower, obviously, will not. The broom could go both ways. So I'm looking for permission to buy these and also permission to go over my skid loader budget by either $280.22 or $3,215.22. Or you could turn it down altogether, and I will probably not get the broom this time around, something like that.
In my opinion, it's not an issue. He's using part of this equipment from another, his tree removal budget, and that'll be very beneficial for him in that area, so I feel that this is appropriate use of the funds, and it's there, the money's...
Yeah, and I'll work with Christina on the numbers and which ones she prefers to come out of where to. I think I just need council's approval to go over initially.
So Devin's always been very careful with his budget, so I know that he's researched it. I would make a motion to go with number one, which would be the 321522 over.
So be approving all four of those pieces of equipment?
Yeah.
Right, right. Motion is second to approve the purchase of the four pieces of attachments for the skid loader. Any further discussion?
Can we just leave the option open for Devin to deal with staff on that piece of it? Or does, because was number two how you were kind of encouraging us to go?
Yeah, by the money, yes, but, you know, I think Christina had the same opinions, Barb maybe too. So I'll, as long as you guys approve it, you know, that's, we'll work that money out later, if that's all right.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion in a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administration reports. We have a salary listing for the city employees for the 2019 calendar year. Anything further, Brian?
Nope.
We're required by law to publish all of our salaries each and every year, so if I could have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the salary listing for 2019. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Can I have some comments, sir?
Yes.
So, looking at this, one of the concerns that I have is there's been some discussion about Kim Surwicke, who is listed as a full-time employee. I don't believe that she is an employee of us. She's an employee of the chamber, so I want to make sure that we understand this correctly because at this point, I guess I wouldn't be in favor of approving this list with Kim Surwicke's name as a city employee.
My understanding of the director of the chamber is a employee of the city, is reimbursed then from the chamber funds back to the city?
Correct.
Is that accurate? So they become an employee of the city just by default?
The challenge I have is the city is not allowed by the contract to set her wages. We're not allowed to control the work that she does. She reports directly to the chamber, so in this case, she's not doing work specifically for the city, she's doing it for the chamber. And with that, I would ask that she not be listed as a city employee.
So this was negotiated many years ago, and I guess I would challenge you on that, Tim. You know, sometimes some of this stuff has been done, and there was really good reason for it, and so to reinvent the wheel, yeah, she reports to the chamber board. I don't think that this is a hill to die on.
The city council should not have say in it because she's reimbursing 100% of the salary and benefits.
Correct.
Am I correct in making that statement? And I agree with Barb, this is a longstanding relationship that we've had ever since the chamber was all volunteer staffed, which I was part of that back in the 90s, and I think it's a partnership that we ought to continue.
And I would imagine there's other caveats, such as workman's comp?
Oh, that is covered by the city, and then reimbursed.
Reimbursed by the chamber, but...
Yep, all costs associated with Kim, whether it's insurance, wages, taxes, unemployment, insurance, workers' comp are reimbursed at 100% from the chamber.
There's advantages to having that run through the city, I would imagine, was the...
So, the concern I have is this is a contract that was actually developed in 2006, and I've read the contract, and it's so specific that it's not the city of Brandon that's doing any of her reviews or anything that would typically define her as an employee. We've set a precedence now that a nonprofit can have their president come to... We've set a precedence now that a nonprofit can have their president come to the city, and they can become a city employee. So, the concern is, is what other opportunities is that going to open for the city? Is that something where the baseball association, the hockey association, somebody like that could also come to us and do the similar method where we're providing South Dakota retirement system, the benefits, all those things to those individuals? This is setting a precedence, and I'm definitely not in favor of that.
I have a question.
Need a motion? Oh, we got a motion in a second. Hold on here. I do have a motion in a second. Christina, call the roll on the motion in the second.
Bastian.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Housman.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion carries. Item number 12B, a resolution 3-19, establishing a community coordinating council. As I discussed in the briefing meeting, this is an organization that's getting together with Minnetonka County, Lincoln County, all the sheriff's departments, the mayors, the... Who else was in there? School districts from all these counties coordinating effort to try to combine resources and efforts to economize things and make our world a better place, if I may. It's no cost to the city. As I told you in the briefing meeting, all this means is another meeting for the mayor to attend, and he just loves attending all these meetings, so I think it's a... The concept is good. To carry it out is another... Going to be a tough hill to climb, but there's a lot of powerful people in that room. Mayor Tenahaken is really taking the lead on this, and Minnetonka County is taking a major lead on this, too, so I think there's a possibility of something good coming out of this. So, we need a motion to approve us as a member of this council?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had a iPad that we declared surplus a meeting or so ago, and now we took bids on that iPad, and I think our highest bid was $45, $44.
$41, $41.
$41, $41. That was our high bid. I need a motion to accept that bid.
Can I make a motion to accept that?
I need a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the high bid for this iPad?
You're a lucky man, Devin, lucky man.
But that's going to help our budget.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda, item number... Or, letter D, we have an RFP for an insurance broker. We've tweaked this several times. Any other discussion or input from the council that would like to be heard?
Yes, just a couple more tweaks. There was a blank where it talks about the review of the proposal and the date. I thought we should get those filled in. I would like to propose that we have the personnel committee be the selection committee, and then if we need to tweak any council members due to availability, we could do that. As far as date, we expect it back. I guess I would look to Brian to help figure that piece of it out. And then, the other addition that I think would be prudent, since we're... Our fiscal year and our health insurance year do not line up. They're very opposite, so we do have an established budget. I'd like to see us add under the agent's scope and responsibilities under item number one that this agent does number one within or under our established budget.
That's a good, good point, Dana.
Further? Can we get this approved with the changes that have been recommended tonight?
Correct. And I haven't put a calendar in because I didn't know if you were going to approve it tonight or not. Typically, what we do is advertise it for a couple of weeks in the paper, put a deadline probably early February for review by personnel committee, sometime February, hopefully for the February 18th council meeting, no later than the March 4th council meeting recommendation.
You can fill in those dates, though?
Yep.
Upon approval tonight. All the rest of board members okay with the changes that have been proposed by Dana?
Yep.
And can I get a motion to approve this, to go out for... Quest for proposals for insurance brokers?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for all the hard work, Dana. I know you've put a ton of time into this, and you have a big vested interest in it, so I truly appreciate all the efforts.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item 12E, social media policy. We were presented a policy with changes from our city attorney, proposed changes. Any comments, Lisa?
Yes, after the meeting, I provided these comments to the administration and then to now you. The intent of it was not to restrict public comments in terms of First Amendment, but to make clear when it would be if there was something that was inappropriately posted on one of our sites, we would delete that because we're very careful here, I believe, about allowing the public to exercise their First Amendment rights. I did, this morning, send to you, Mr. Mayor, and then to Brian Reed, and now the council has some further definitions, just to make it very clear as to when we're talking about employees, what that means, and we're talking about agents, we're talking about independent contractors, elected officials. And then, as to who owns the communication, if it's a social media site that is composed or sent or received by an employee in an official capacity, that's property of the city. So, we made that very clear in the revision. I did add the section in there unless some other exception applies by law. I was thinking through if there's some confidentiality and somebody's using a social media site to privately message somebody. I wanted to make sure that we weren't expanding it, that the public could have absolutely everything if there's some private messaging that we're using for social media. So, that was the second change that I proposed before you in the separate handout today. But, what I did do then is to further clarify when it is we, as a city, would take down comments if they were posted so that we aren't unlawfully restricting First Amendment rights. So, the changes that I proposed following the draft that was initially provided are within your packet, in addition to the separate handout.
I guess I'm not sure where it's saying in here that we are restricting comment... I mean, I don't quite understand the concern about it. It just looks to me like we are trying to protect our site against, you know, vulgarity, that sort of thing. Everybody here on the council can have their own Facebook page. I mean, we're not restricting that, so I guess I'm not quite sure where the angst is on this, and if someone can explain that, I would like to know that.
So, under policy, it specifically says, "All social media websites created and utilized during the courses and scope of an employee's performance of his or her job duties will be identified as belonging to the City of Brandon, including a link to the city official's website." So, in essence, what that means is, could the city take ownership of certain pages? For example, I had a city council... Wakefield for Council page. I have a Doterra Dad page. I have business pages. That verbiage alone definitely is written in a way that it could become property of the City of Brandon. The other concerns that I have is the rules of this are specific to empower our city administrator to be the decision-making process, and I really have trouble with that because what it is doing in essence is putting our city administrator in a higher authority than an elected official. That individual is then able to make the decision what is considered private confidential or, I think the other one was sensitive information. So, that's not something that's being decided by or empowered to be decided by this council or the mayor. It is only empowered to be by the city administrator, as it's currently written. So, the question then becomes if there's a delay in posting something, a prime example is council packets. I'm a firm believer in council packets being available to the public in a timely fashion so that the public can review them and provide feedback to myself and the other council members. And, you know, is that sensitive information, or do I have the ability to take that council packet, and I've been emailed it, it's public information, posted onto social media? This policy is very loose when it comes to that, and it's up to the city administrator's interpretation, not the mayor, not the city council.
I guess in response to the first issue, the way I interpret the policy is, what it says is if the... If the site is created by the employee in his or her official capacity, then that becomes the City of Brandon site. It doesn't say if there's an agent, an elected official's site, that becomes the City of Brandon property. So, I don't think it takes over an elected official's private social media site. With respect to taking down something, if somebody is posting something, a comment on the city's official site that is threatening vulgarity, racial, sexual, somebody needs to be able to take that down, and it doesn't need to be the city administrator, but it needs to be somebody who is there and making that decision because we can't wait two weeks to have something that's threatening or racial or sexual or vulgar up for two weeks. So, we need to have somebody to do that, and whoever it is, that's for you to decide, but I do think we need to have somebody make that decision promptly as opposed to waiting for two weeks for the council to decide if something should be taken down.
I guess I don't have... That's not the concern when it comes to offensiveness. The concern becomes the determining factor of what information is allowed or approved. You know, in here, it specifically says that we cannot disclose private or confidential information, which I understand may be protected by client privileges, or maybe there's potential legal issues, or even personnel issues. Obviously, that should not be posted. But the next sentence says, "No social media website should be used to disclose sensitive information." There's no definition on that, and that definition is something that is not defined by us, the council, or any elected official. It's solely defined by the city administrator. So, with that being as lucid it is, if there's something that I post, hence the social media policy on a private page, and that becomes a large topic of discussion, that could, in essence, be considered sensitive, and our city administrator could determine that as sensitive, then I would be in violation of this policy, and I'm not okay with that.
If I can, as I was referred to on social media as the interim, temporary mayor, which I've never been had so many adjectives on the mayor position as that, but as that mayor position, if I can... I'm not sure where we're even going with this social media. I'm inclined to say, "Go away. It's done," is what I'm inclined to say. And I know this was all started before I got here, so I don't want to hurt feelings or whatever, but I'm thinking that this needs to just go away because I'm not going to be the one to analyze whether something that Joe Housman puts out on the internet is proper or not proper. That isn't going to happen for me, and I'm not going to be the one to discipline, monitor, whatever. Is there strong feelings on the part of the council to have this policy?
Well, I don't know that I have a strong feeling, but I do feel that if we don't have anything and we have some issues, where do we go back to then? I guess that would be my... My question is, if we have nothing down, then we have no gauge. I'm not interested in censorship either, but I also, you know, from an employee standpoint, employer standpoint, we have to protect our site. So, if we have nothing, I don't know what... I don't know how we deal with it. Lisa is the HR expert, not myself.
Well, we certainly have HR policies, and a lot of employers have their social media policy governing the employee's conduct within their personnel policies. We have also been working on administrative policies, and this is something that could be scaled back and very brief in the administrative policies that we've kind of been working on back in November. There's no requirement to have a social media policy. It's something that council back in November wanted, and administration started drafting, and then I revised to try and make sure that we were complying with the legal rights of what we're taking down. So, we can have separately a social media policy of what employees can and can't do, and we don't have to have something broad like this. So, it's whatever the council wants to do.
I think one of the reasons that we ventured out into this was also in conjunction with looking at opening up comments on the city site. And, you know, one thing that jumps out at me on this document is the purpose. It states right off the bat that it's to communicate and deliver messages directly to citizens and to encourage citizen involvement, interaction, and feedback. And towards the latter section, it encourages to only post on the city's social media sites when providing city information. I think those two are wonderful things. That's what we want. We want that interaction. We want people going back to the city's page. We want it informative. We want engaging questions to educate everyone that's seeing them. But the problem is, our city's site is on lockdown, so our purpose takes people to absolutely nowhere. And I guess that, to me, is as big or bigger of an issue than the other parts of it. I do think that Barb has some validity, though, with, you know, you need to have something in place, and you have employees, and they need direction. I think we just need to get to the point where we engage the citizens on our page, and I've been an advocate of that since August. I don't know how the rest are feeling, but I have had a discussion... I'll put Tammy on the spot. You know, the comments aren't seen, so we don't know what people are saying, but Tammy has assured me that they're not bad, that they're things that we could engage and interact the public with, and they could learn from. I just think we're missing the boat by not doing that. I know it's not comfortable. Change is never comfortable, but it's a necessary step for us to take, and I think that, you know, citizens are hungry for this information, and if they had a place to go and get the real factual data, it might alleviate some of the problems that we're having in our community.
So, I agree with Barb's comments. I guess my question, Dana, would be who's going to respond?
A couple meetings back, we talked about Alliance Communications changing their processes and the fact that it really was not as significant of a time factor as everyone is fearful that it's going to be. They commit like an hour a week. I go back to, when you have a Facebook page, such as the city's, you have to first post something for anybody else to be able to respond or comment or ask a question. We do very, very little of that, so we would have to first do something before anybody else can engage with us. So, it's a very minimal investment, and I think we have some very capable people that could take that on. We've got a part-time person coming on board that's going to free up some time for other people, and we even have some applicants that have some social media experience, it sounds like. So, I think that's the direction that we need to head, as scary as it may be.
And I guess I would comment and say that through my experience with social media, residents reach out to me on multiple occasions. There's times where I'll discuss certain topics with residents to gauge their level of interest or discord for certain topics that may be on the agenda. Typically, I even... It leads to maybe a coffee at Scooter's, and it's been a phenomenal tool for me personally to be engaged with the public, and that's why I'm so adamant about this social media policy. Now, I think the mayor had a good point, and that's what is the goal of the policy? And I kind of hear it as two things. The first is, what should a policy be for our employees? The simple things like you're not supposed to use social media during work hours, you can't talk slanderous about your employer, those types of things. That is one thing to have in the employee handbook. The second piece of it is what Dana's talking about, and that's how do we empower the team to be active on social...
team to be active on social media? I'm active. I do a lot on social media. I do live videos and all these things. I would have zero issue engaging the public through the city's page and helping build that. And I, I know that that's maybe not the case for all the council members, but, you know, I would have zero issue, you know, replying to comments or so forth.
So, to take this down the path, I'm not hearing a lot of push to keep bringing back a social media policy. I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing activate current Facebook page that the city has. Is that what I heard?
I think this goes hand in hand with that because this gives some direction to what would be permitted and what would not be permitted, and what would be taken down. I mean, we're talking about, in essence, the city's Facebook page that that would be done.
So, Dana, you would support this if there's some language in there tweaked to allow?
Yeah, I mean, the, the- Language that, so I had reached out to Lisa because I, I do think that the definition, and I think there's a couple more places that with this definition change with employees being separated from agents is good, and, and I think it goes a long ways. There's still a couple areas that would need to be tweaked or just singled from one or the other where it deals much more with the, where, where social media is going into work hours or spilling into the workplace. That doesn't pertain to us. And right now, it, it says both. So, just a little fine tuning on some of that, but, but then, yeah.
And I guess I look at it that we pass a policy, it's fluid. We can change it if it's not working out. So, if we do some of the changes, maybe that you're proposing, Dana, I don't know how you feel about those, Tim, if you would support those, or you just want it to go away, and it's just open to everything.
You know, a suggestion, we had a good work session on the ordinances, the sewer ordinances, where Dana and, and Tim came forward, and, and we spent about an hour, hour and a half with Raleigh. Maybe that's something to do. The three of us sit down and see if we can come up with, there's a lot of language in here legally you don't have to have. This was what was presented to me. I tried to make it comport with what I thought legally we didn't want to do in terms of restricting free speech. So, that's a suggestion. The three of us sit down together and see if we can hammer something out that we can present to the council at a different time.
So-
If you want to keep with a social media policy.
So, if, you know, if our primary concern is the employee, employees, can that be covered just in the handbook instead of a separate policy?
Yes, most employers have, not most employers, a lot of employers have social media policies directing what employees can and can't do. I think the concern here was if we're going to have a Facebook site and public is going to be commenting on it, you know, what are we going to take down? And I think that's important to have some type of policy to say we're going to take down vulgarity and, and defamatory language and things like that. So, we could have a very small administrative social media policy and do something that encompasses just for the employees. So, I, I think a work session would be a, a good idea to do something like that.
I agree.
If I may, I would like to invite Tammy, being the city person that's been very active on social media. I know your schedule's really busy, but you've, we don't have access to see what is on the city page or what those comments are, and I think that could be valuable.
Again, I still think we have a problem with somebody from the city responding to comments because of the lack of time, even though we're hiring a part-time person. I think we need to figure out how much time that person's going to be putting in doing other things before we commit to that. And that's all I'm going to say on social media.
I'm salaried. I'd be happy to do that, and it's no additional cost to the city.
I don't want you commenting on the city stuff because one of the reasons we have this is because of your pages. So, you, no.
Okay, let's move forward on this, and I think we have our marching orders on that, that, that it's going to, you're going to draw up some stuff for employees, which is a good idea, but trying to encompass the, the social media. I mean, it's impossible to encompass everything that's, that's out there and blah, blah, blah. So, we can have a work session to, to go about it there and, and see what comes of it, but hopefully we can get something there, going there. Item number 12F, discuss ambulance standby fee. We were briefed by MedStar Ambulance for a request for payment for this 911 services that they provide for us. The council had a chance to mull this over, and-
I would suggest that we not move forward with discussing the standby fee, but then we move forward with putting a, I don't know what you want to call it, a work group together of a couple of us. Tim had volunteered, and explore some other possibilities. One of those, meeting with the county, contact some other communities within the county like Del Rapids, Valley Springs, you know, have the mayor involved at that, meet with them, maybe go to the county and see if there's anything there that we haven't talked about is what I would like to suggest.
So, I, I did a little bit of homework to that regard, Chuck, and Garrettson is, is another example. They currently pay $30,000 out of the city budget and then $50,000 out of the county budget. So, their ambulance service is being funded with about $80,000. One of the biggest concerns that I have is, is in essence, what we've done by having this ambulance service located here in town is we've reduced the, the load on the, on the volunteer fire department. And as an experienced firefighter in Harrisburg, we didn't have that. And one of the concerns that I have is, is it puts a lot of burden on the volunteer fire department to the point where I don't know if they'd be able to handle that burden because we're asking our volunteers to leave work, and it's becoming more and more and more difficult for those people to be allowed to leave work. Even as a salaried individual, I was having challenges towards the end of my tenure as a fireman, being able to leave work to, to go to calls. So, if you think about it, I think Jay used a number right around 600 calls that he goes to. Over half of those calls, our fire department isn't responding to. They're not required to. And if you would put an additional 300 calls onto our volunteer fire department, that's a lot. That's a lot to ask of them. Because if we do not have a local ambulance service that can respond within three to five minutes, what we're going to be is we're going to be looking at an ambulance service that may have a longer time, and that'll force us to have our volunteer fire department start responding again. Just recently, there was a, a story in the news about Sioux Falls where they're even seeing their response times up to 30 minutes because of call stacking. So, I'd really caution us from taking too long. I think that the, the work group is, is important, but I really would caution us for taking too long so we don't lose a potential opportunity to here to have and, and continue to have a phenomenal service in town.
Well, and does Garrettson have their own, they have their own ambulance?
And that's EMT, paramedics.
Oh, okay. I personally like Jay, and I personally like MedStar. They have done phenomenal work here in Brandon. They have, I mean, their response time is less than five minutes, I think. And I agree with Tim. I mean, I just, I think they do such a good job. I don't want us to go and start researching other things when we have such a great service here in town. Yes, you know, he has asked for some assistance, but I still, he has done such great work that I hate to give that up, I guess.
Sure. If I can. Go ahead, Brett.
No.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that I would agree with Chuck, that I think this needs a work session. I think we need to look into this from many different aspects. This is not an easy thing. It's a very complicated system with regards to certification, ordinances within the county, the state, licensure with the Department of Osteopathic Medicine, et cetera. So, I think this is a complicated process, and I think it requires a work session. Otherwise, we're not going to fully understand the complic, you know, the, the difficulties that this faces, and I would agree with Chuck that I think we need to proceed with the work session before anything else is done.
And I would second that.
I would third that.
I thirded.
If I can, I'm going to butt in here now. If I can, I understand the work group. I respect the work group, and I respect the work of the council and whatnot. But in my thinking of this situation all through the week, in the past weeks, let me ask you this. If we did not, council, fellow council people, I'm asking you guys, if we did not have an ambulance service here, and one of these citizens came up here and addressed the board of the long time that it took for a response time from rural metro or whatever the ambulance service is out of Sioux Falls to get here, and it came that we had a solution for the problem, that somebody would provide 24/7 ambulance service with a three to five-minute response time and have paramedics that can do all the stuff that a fire department cannot do, police chiefs cannot do, if they, we had a paramedic that could do all those things, and they offered to do it for $50,000 within the City of Brandon, would we think that's a good deal?
If it's for profit, I'd want a lot more questions Mr. Mayor answered, and I'd want some more accountabilities in place, and I wouldn't just blanket write the check.
I agree. I think we need more financial data. I think that the ask right now is just kind of a random number. I, I don't, I don't doubt that we're probably going there. I don't doubt that they're a great service.
I guess I was trying to take out all the items. There are things that people are bringing up. I just thought, I just posed the question, would we think $50,000 was a good deal to provide these services for an ambulance?
Yeah.
I absolutely would, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe that if we were to put this out to bit, it would come in at a much, much higher value.
I guess with the first, seconds, and thirds that I heard prior to me speaking, that it would be the deciding, that it would be the hope of the council to form a work group on this, on this, a study group or whatever we call it on this topic.
I just think we have to do our due diligence. We do it on everything else, and Mr. Mayor, with all respect, if the school board was going to commit $50,000 to something, I think you'd probably study it even if it seemed like it was a great idea. And, and I, I think they do a great job, but I don't think we can just, just do it without doing a little bit more work. And I'm not saying for, like, take a long time, one meeting and-
No, I'm not saying take months or anything.
But every meeting takes months.
Well, let's have this, Joe, let's have this not take months.
Come on, now you know better than that.
No, I, I think we could move-
Every meeting takes months, Chuck.
I disagree. I think we could move forward.
Come on. How long have you been on this council?
Long enough.
Oh, my God. Every meeting takes months. We can't get a, a thing, never mind.
So, and I, I think that, you know, I've, I've thought about this a lot. I've done some, some research. I've dug into it, and I think the point that the mayor was trying to get to, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but it is of a value to, to the safety of our residents, which is something that we duly swore to, to protect our residents, and in this case, it's at a cost of $50,000. To be honest, one of the things I looked at is, is just a few budget items that we have that are over $50,000. One of those is a rubber park pad that we're going to do over on the east side of town by me. So, at this point, I would make a motion that we move forward with securing ambulance service so we do not have an opportunity of an outage.
What was the last part?
Make, make a motion to move forward with securing ambulance service to ensure we don't have an outage in ambulance service.
Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, I, I'm confused. He's not, he's not talking about leaving.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he is talking? Oh, he is? Oh, then I second your motion.
You seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion is second on the table. Further discussion?
Well, I, you know, why a group can't be formed and be ready with a recommendation in two weeks, I, I don't know why that can't happen. So, well-
It doesn't happen in Wisconsin.
Well, it could happen. So, I guess in my, my thinking, I'm not going to be held hostage because of a timeframe if we can do it in a reasonable amount of time.
I guess where's this information coming from that he's leaving? Because the last meeting, I, I'm pretty sure he stood here and said he wasn't there yet.
The chief just said it. He works with them daily.
Oh, we're, we're not going to be dealing with rumors and suppositions here. We're done.
Yeah, so-
There's a motion in a second. Christina, call the roll. Name?
Clark.
Fish.
No.
Housman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Name?
Wakefield.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes, Mayor.
No.
No.
Motion fails two to four. That's what I have. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, with that going, I would ask Brian that you get together and, and get a group formed as soon as possible and, and do the things that have been talked about tonight here with the group, contacting the county, contacting other cities, Valley Springs, Garrettson, those types of things, and see what we come forward with it.
I'd like to see it on the agenda for next meeting in two weeks and give itself a timeframe so we can move on with it.
Very good. Item number 13, maintenance work report is there for your review. We need approval to purchase wetland credits for the Holly Boulevard project.
Um, actually, just an update on it, the wetland-
Just an update?
Yep. I don't quite have the agreement ready to go yet, so that'll be at the next meeting, but I'm going to recommend that we go with Golden Wetland Banks. It'll be about $18,350.
Generally, the easiest thing to do is go to the bank and purchase credits out of there.
Right.
Okay, we'll continue on, and unless there's any questions for Tammy on the wetlands credit that we have to buy back. Item number C, item letter C, I'm sorry, funding agreement with the South Dakota DOT for a new coordination plan for the city transit system. If you, quickly, Brian, if you could just give us a recap of our briefing meeting.
Uh, I, I contacted ICAP. They didn't get back to me yet. It's a requirement from DOT to maintain our funding for the transit system, which, how much do we get? Fifty-three? Anyway, about $60,000 a year. Total cost for the grant app is $19,800. The state would fund 80% of that, which is $15,840. Our share would be $39.60. So, to continue receiving state funds for the transit system, we need to participate in the grant, or in the coordination plan.
And be out of pocket on our part of about-
$39.60.
Four thousand dollars.
Yep.
Correct. Can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on this plan? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't think we have any update on safety on Holly crosswalks. Letter E is to approval to advertise for bids for the Brandon Park addition, Sylvan Circle project.
Yep.
Uh, we're in a maze of words here. Rushmore, Sylvan Circle, that whole project. Need a motion to, to approve advertising for those bids?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Tammy, any additional?
No.
Ready to go?
Yep.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Water and Sewer Committee report. We need to review the bids that we opened up for well number eight. Looks like Sergeant Drilling is the name of the company. It was low bid. Brian, help me on, we had a couple bids.
Correct. We had three bids. Low bid was submitted by Sergeant Drilling, $208,771. Kohoy Group was $259, $339, and Tine Well was $312, $140. Engineers estimate was $270,000.
Can I have a motion to approve the low bid?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
So, I just wanted to thank-
Excuse me.
Mr. Brown for taking some time after the briefing meeting to discuss this with me a little bit and talk about Sergeant Drilling. It sounds like they're a good firm to work with, and we shouldn't have any potential risk there. One thing I did want to point out is when you compare the bids from last year versus this year, there is, is a difference between what was bid, and that difference was the size of the, the hole that we're putting in the ground. It is bigger this year, and there's a potential understanding that Tine Wells' rate went up considerably because they had to buy different drilling equipment to make that hole happen. So, so we did see a, a little bit changing in the bids because of that larger size. So we did see a little bit changing in the bids because of that larger size.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the low bid to Sergeant Drilling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have to approve to advertise for bids for well number eight. We have advertised dates of January 16th and 23rd and open bids on February 6th. We will need a motion to approve those dates, approve advertising for those bids?
Nine, it's nine, not eight.
Second.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve advertising bids for well number nine. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 02-19, water smarter incentive program. This is the program that I think Kevin Smith from the Water Committee delineated to us earlier at a previous meeting in some depth. We need a resolution or a motion to approve the resolution?
It sets the rebate amounts.
Get me out of here.
It sets the rebate amounts for the rain barrels, the rain sensors, the assistant controllers, et cetera.
I would make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I want to thank that group for their hard work. They put a lot of time in it. Trudy's here tonight. Dana's put away. Angie, yeah, thank you very much for all of your hard work.
It's my understanding that there's a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM with the Conservation Group and they do have some guest speakers talking about irrigation. So should the public be interested, it would be a good opportunity to see what the Conservation Committee does. They do a lot of hard work and they do a ton of research to help this community. So what they've done, what's that?
They won't be presenting. We're going to answer questions.
Oh, other way around, but it'll be a good opportunity to meet the team.
First reading of ordinance number 575, clear water connections.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 577, wastewater ordinance revisions.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
We had some discussion about 41117. Dana, I would just state Tammy and I have some proposed language to put into the second reading and it doesn't change it substantially, so I don't think we'll have to have a second reading on who's going to make the determination and which, yeah, so I think we'll be okay there and I'll get that out tomorrow.
I thought we had a great work session. It was just shy of two hours. Lisa and Tammy and Raleigh and Tim and myself and we ended up making almost 50 changes, I think, so.
Yeah, it was a lot of work and I want to thank the team for being available to make that happen. You know, when it gets to these long-winded ordinances, there's a lot of content and this is a very, it can be very difficult, especially when we're trying to negotiate with Sioux Falls. So good work on everyone's part.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to approve ordinance 577. I don't think we have any updates on the grease trap inspection program. That brings us to the end of our meeting agenda. I need a motion to go into executive session for a potential litigation matter.
So moved.
At 7:15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An executive session at 7:15.